Council Fisher?
Aye.
Council Hamilton?
Aye.
Council Laverne?
Aye.
Council Piper?
Aye.
Council Robinson?
Aye.
Council Shepherd?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Our political change is secured by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Council, I get approval of the agenda motion, please.
Motion to approve agenda, second.
It's been made and seconded to approve the agenda, all right here.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent, but then all I appear to be working.
Second that.
Would you pay me second to approve the consent agenda? Number call, please.
Council Piper?
Aye.
Council Robinson?
Aye.
Council Shepherd?
Aye.
Council Fisher?
Aye.
Council Hamilton?
Aye.
Council Laverne?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Next item is visitor's public comment for any item that is not on this evening's agenda. If you would like to address the council on something, please go up with your name and address at this time. Service come up there, you are.
Hello, my name is Scott, the emotion that I own the Gateway Building on the corner. Now, I was wondering if you guys can consider to bring electrical to the sign that says historical downtown. There's no electricity there, and it'd be nice to be lit up.
And which building, where were you at?
The Gateway Building on the corner.
Oh, yeah.
We'll pay for the electrical.
Yeah, you know, we can, well, that's it. We considered that, and we tried working with the attorneys at the time. They weren't interested. Explain that, please, Susan.
So there, so you are correct, there is not power to that area, and it was the Columbia Falls Community Foundation put in those signs. It is astronomically expensive to get power to that site based on where Flathead Electric, where it is, is in the alley. So they had issues with the streetlights on Nucleus, they mean Department of Transportation in the state. So power is very expensive to get to the sign. So we, we, the city, asked the community foundation to look into like the solar, the solar lights, because it's very expensive to move the power, and that's, it's not part of, it's not part of like our street lighting district, it's not a light, so, so funding. The community foundation couldn't fund getting light, getting power to that location.
So is it still an option for the Gateway Building to, to supply power to one light out there?
I, I don't know what would be involved with running power from private building to the sign.
Not much. So obviously, I think if you wanted to, I think their community foundation is still alive, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you could just...
What about some of the tax funds, can, can we use some of that?
Like, like the manager said, it's really expensive. We tried to tie into the street lights.
Well, he tied into our building.
That's, that's certainly something the community foundation could look at if you're willing to provide the power.
Yeah, with, I mean, with the cost of LED lighting, it's...
One, one light?
Yeah, but some, you know, it penalizes the lighting a little bit, you know?
Oh, yeah. Susan, is there any way you could let him know how to get hold the community foundation?
Sure.
Talk to them a little bit, and I'd love to see lights, I thought we needed lights at the beginning.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the other side of the bank, if they have lighting or any of it.
You've got lights there that they like the Christmas trees.
They went to Christmas tree.
There was already power that Glacier Bank had installed.
Oh, they, so they have power, but they just don't have the LED lighting? Because LED lighting is substantially less than...
Oh, yeah.
So they, right, so the, so they had power but needed more power. So, but if you leave your contact information on the sign, then I'll, I'll look back.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks for bringing it forward.
Okay.
No. The community foundation owns the sign.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, anyone further wish to address us? Take nine, we'll move on. Notice of public hearing, we have a public hearing this evening, starting on our 2324 fiscal preliminary budget. We will start on the regular, the hearings begin tonight, and they will be continued until we are done after we get our tax valuation, usually comes the first part of September. So, and this, at, tonight, we're going to talk about special assessments, street lighting district and the street maintenance district, if I'm correct.
That's correct. You read your, you guys read your memo and read the packet, thank you. I'm not going to go over to the podium, because then I'm in the way of the spring. So we are reviewing street lighting and street maintenance district budget, those are called out separately in the statute. Fund 2400 is our street lighting, fund 2500 is street maintenance. So we can annexate properties this year, although we are going to have to add the Cedar Palace property on 12th into the lighting district, because part of that project puts two lights on existing poles. So they, so a property, all properties are in our street maintenance district. Only properties that abut city street lighting are in the lighting district now, and then to expand it is a little bit different, but we annexed in, the Cedar Palace property did not have lights installed, but they get to, they get to join them, they get to join the lighting district, because now there'll be lights there. So our street lighting frontage is based on front footage, and that was decided by the council way back in 1983, when these districts were created. So our front footage is a little over 237,000 lineal feet, and the assessment is $30,049 or .1265% per foot. So without any annexations or any additional property frontage, that remains the same, there would be no change in the street lighting. So street lighting pays by statute for the electrical power for streetlights. Some lights are still owned by Flathead Electric, but we get the, we get to pay for the power, because we have a lighting district, and we get to pay for maintenance on any of the poles that are not owned by Flathead Electric, or governed by Flathead Electric. That includes all of the specialty lighting or street poles put in, Cedar Point had different poles, and River, one of the other rivers, and Glens Edition. So they didn't just do standard street lighting poles, so any maintenance on, on those, that's all on us. And now we have those three, so that they're using the same bulbs, because each one uses a little bit, something different. So the street lighting district budget usually covers around $50,000. We, we have a reserve set at $6,800. And we do, we do allow for some projects because, repair and maintenance, because of those lights that we're responsible for. The electrical bill, we estimated about $36,000. And it, you know, it kind of depends on what, how dark it is, right? Because they're on the snow machine. So that, that one holds fairly stable. Street, street maintenance, so street maintenance funds just pay for maintenance. We're proposing increasing it from the 316,000, adding $14,000, or approximately .00035 per square foot. So our standard city lot is 50 by 125, which is 6,250 square feet. So for a standard city lot, that would be $2.19. So last year, we, we approved an increase in the budget, and we budgeted to use some of our cash on hand, because we added that second floater position. Our floater positions work in streets, parks, and water. And so we added that second floater, we knew that we were going to cut into cash balance. Now, before we got the main collections here last week, the, the fund was in the red, but we knew that. So, because we budgeted to use, use cash. So it's all in the timing. So the main assessments and taxes came to us on about June, June 10. So now, our June 10 balance, we have, in addition to the $43,719 reserve, we have about $8,700 in cash, right? So before that, the total fund was in, was in the red. So we, we don't want to continue being in the red, but we don't want money, we don't want to reserve money just for the sake of reserving money, I, we want to work it. So, so we got about $102,000 in June, maintaining that positive balance. We have about another $25,000 in outstanding assessments that'll come, hopefully the county's liking it in June, we'll get it in, we'll get it in July. Hence, the recommendation, let's, let's go about $14,000, let's stabilize this fund. And on a standard lot, it would be, like I said, $2.19. So the street maintenance fund, by statute, can only be used for maintenance and not construction activities. This is crack filling, snow plowing, maintenance, and not rebuilding. That's what you use your special gas tax going for, which does allow construction, and, and that's a little pot of money that we've been saving for street construction. So aside from, so in our regular gas tax funds, because we have not, the council has not declared Columbia Falls a, or a second-class district, we can still use 25%, or about $23,000 of our regular gas tax funds, so we decide to help buy street foot lanes. And then the special, so during this last legislative session, they changed, the legislature changed the BARSA funds, the special gas tax. Now, instead of getting a notice in March that says your funds are X, which were about $135,000, tell us how you're going to use it. In September, we're going to get that $135,000 that, that we wanted to designate for Chip Seeling and Project. Now, we're going to get a check September 1, and now, special gas packs won't come in one lump sum, we're going to send it every month, based on the collections of the previous one. So we'll have, summer months will be big chunk of money, and other times of year will be less, but they're supposed to be, Department of Transportation is supposed to be sending the city clerk a notice of what's our estimated collections. So that'll make it a little bit different when we're doing maintenance and street maintenance and how those funds are distributed. So we'll just have to get used to that from, from year to year then, and maybe we'll get more money, I don't know. So, so this, so tonight, just looking at street lighting and street maintenance, since they're called out separately, the, I'm just working with the Public Works and the Street Department on exactly what are the priorities in the street fund, because as you folks know, whatever you set the budget at, is where we, we, we can't fund operations above that. So you'll be getting a whole budget pictured later, but based on state law, you actually have to set your assessment in advance, and so that it can get to the county, the federal tax notices. Now, I, I have this in my report, but since we're talking budgets and taxes in the county, the Department of Revenue, so just mailed out property assessment valuation forms, usually those come out in about a day and a morning, and they just sent them, and there'll be a protest period or a... So one of the things that the statute requires is on those assessment forms that every taxpayer is about to get, it'll show the change in valuation, and they're required by state law to estimate your taxes based on last year's mill levy. Now, Department of Revenue is going to hold a workshop on July 12, I put the public notice out here on the board, and they're also hosted via Zoom, so they can do some Q and A. They recognize that that's not accurate, right? That the notice, just because our city taxpayers were levying 791 mills last year, and that's city, county, state, school district, that won't necessarily be the same. And especially for the city, right? Because we levied 180 mills, we already know that we're going to send back on our resort tax of about 80 mills. But by law, they have to use last year's. So unfortunately, taxpayers are going to say, oh my gosh, my taxes are going up 20%. But cities and counties are weird, if the valuation goes up, our mills go down. But that's not how the law reads. Department of Revenue fully understands that, and they know that they're about to panic our property taxpayers. Barb and Sean and I will be prepared to answer those questions if we can. And obviously, if somebody's valuation went up and it doesn't seem right, or you look on the form and it says you have two acres and you only have one, or, you know, you have three lots that you don't... Obviously, we want our taxpayers to get a hold of Department of Revenue, do that informal AB 56 review, and say, whoa, there's got to be something wrong here. The fact that it's so late and so close to when our assessed value is required, so they mailed them out, and they give folks 30 days. I think mine hit my post office box today. So I didn't look to see when they mailed it for that 30 days, but just like you indicated, we're supposed to get our assessed value on or before the first Monday of August, that then builds in so that we can set our money smoothly September. This is going to be a really interesting year, since they haven't even started the review process, and they already know that valuations are up. However, every, every one of these workshops and budget discussions will talk about it, right? They, although I don't have preliminary information from them, but we can review that and make sure that what we're putting out is that people understand that just, just because you may have gotten a notice that says that your value went up 20%, it does not mean that we're levying the same. By, by statute, by 1510420, the council can raise their, their levy by half the rate of inflation, which last year was 1.77%. It was about $11,000 or $12,000 to us. And then for newly taxable property, that's still the case, and you guys have seen it. I didn't, I didn't upload the chart, but you've seen where value goes up, mills go down, and then, and then you always evaluate, you know, your direction to me is, tell us, tell us if we levy this, what's the impact on our taxpayers. The legislature adopted a new law that within your budget resolution, you have to report the impact on a $100,000, $200,000, I think, $600,000 house. We always put that information out, and usually I use all of our tax statements to say, okay, here's the valuation, and here's what, here's what the impact is. Now we'll have to be in the budget resolution. Not a, not a major change for us, because, because council, you always talk about the impact on, on the taxpayers, and are refunding what you need. Thankfully, we have the resort tax, and it's working exactly as intended. So this, this levy here, this, as we work on that levy part, is going to be really interesting, knowing that valuations just went out, six months past the majors they do. So we'll do whatever we can to work with our taxpayers, obviously, we'll participate in that Zoom meeting and the in-person meeting that, I can look it up, I think, I kind of look at Chris, because I'm sure that he got a notice the day two from Department of Revenue, or they probably sent it out.
Today's a holiday.
Not for the county, just for courts. It's a little pork in, in this.
I didn't get anything.
It's a federal holiday.
Federal holiday.
Not recognized by the state of Montana, except for courts. So all the rest of us were working. They're doing, same, let me just pull it up, like I said, I put the flyer out here, Town Hall meeting. All right, where's this? I should have just probably faster than going out, just looked at it on the board. Town Hall, July 12, Hilton Garden Inn, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Property assessment Town Hall, understanding your property assessment notice on how it can affect your property taxes. So, so we'll participate, we'll work with our taxpayers, and obviously, council, as has, the city gets information to get information. Barb has not gotten the download on the, the taxpayer file that she has to use to create the assessment file, but we are able to calculate this effect, increasing this on the taxpayer. Part of that notice is that she has to give them that information within 10 days of this, of this hearing, so.
The last thing we've got going on, on this tonight's hearing, permissive, permissive net levy, is that correct?
We're not going to talk about it tonight, because I can't have preliminary numbers.
So if, if we've got the information we need, then I'll open up public hearing?
Yes, I'm done.
Anyone wishing to speak, speak on this, please come forward, in the permissive, or, excuse me, street lighting district to maintenance district. Take nine, the hearing is continued, until we have any final...
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Quick question?
No.
We said we're getting it basically September 30, or September 1st, we would get the $135,000, is that, instead of getting the, we're going to get increments instead of getting a check?
We're going to get the 23 money on September 1st, instead of, council, you folks had already adopted a resolution where we said this is how we want to use our money, and please give it to us? Well, the, the day after that, they held a hearing on the other one, and Department of Transportation said, never mind, don't ask for the money, because, because we're in agreement with this change. So we'll get the 23 chunk of money, and then we'll get the 2324 fiscal money every month.
Okay, okay.
Based on the prior month. So we're really looking forward to seeing how that works. And I think DOT is too, so it'll be interesting.
Okay, good, Kelly. All right, next is ordinance resolutions, first one is Resolution 1901, resolution by the city, designated adhered to his 2023 as an official, and we, designated persons responsible for planning event for 30 years, 2023. We do this every year. Susan, is there anything you would like to add to that?
Well, we note the types of items that are insured and then I won't insure, and then section two, you know, we note that the planners approve only sanctioned and planned events on city-owned or controlled property. So like in the days where they did the wild horse drive that they DOT longer permits, and it's hard on the horses, you know, we had that as an exclusion. So section two does note that these activities, there's other things going on, like the Wild Cat Endowment, or the rodeo, or the Blue Room, or the market, or the Lions Club, they still have their before. We're not assuming responsibility for all of those activities, they're just part of Heritage Days, but the committee, the committee kind of gives this blessing of the calendar and makes sure that, hey, there's not two big things at one time. But their application is for Maritet Park, Columbus Park, Nucleus for the parade, and the, the week in the bank. And so the city, we fill out the street use permit, which includes permission from Montana Department of Transportation. So that's in the, you know, for city and so on. So, so this just indicates that, yes, Heritage Days is a community event, but what we're actually assuming responsibility for, based on MMI and our attorneys, we're not, we're not taking on more activities, like, you know, the senior center does something there, but that's not our activity, we're not insuring the senior center, for example, so, but, yes.
Before we move on to vote on this, I'd like to recognize the following individuals that are designated as planner there to 2023, they need to be singled out and thanked for their, their hard work, and several have been doing it for a long time. So Shirley Rammels, Shandra Rammels, Art Ott, Vicky Ott, and Todd, Todd Derutia. So I think it's important, I think, thank all their hard work in keeping this a viable community event. That being said, Resolution 1900, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we adopt Resolution 1900.
Second that.
Second by Hamilton, roll call, please.
Council Robinson?
Aye.
Council Shepherd?
Aye.
Council Fisher?
Aye.
Council Hamilton?
Aye.
Council Laverne?
Aye.
Council Piper?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye, Resolution 1900 is approved. Next, Resolution 1901, resolution of city amending Fund 4020 Capital Projects Fund general funding budget appropriate for fiscal year ending 2030.
Okay, mayor and council, we need to adjust Fund 4020 due to the timing of the receipt of emergency police department vehicles. Last year's vehicle arrived this year, which we knew would carry that over, and then we ordered, we ordered the next vehicle, but, and it arrived.
It's good for you.
Although it's a different type of vehicle, right? It was the only vehicle that we could get. These vehicles are hard to come by, so it's a little white Dodge Charger is going to join our team. It, it looked, it looked out of place next to the Sea of Black, but didn't.
It does. It'll be, must be a detail on.
It will, so it's not...
It's not a stealth vehicle.
It's not, and, well, it would be right now if we rolled it out of the garage, but, so in order to accommodate both purchases, we're, I'm asking you to adjust the budget, we have, we have the cash reserve, so we left money there, we just need to adjust our appropriation, and I, and I adjusted it, because the cameras went from like 5,000 to 11,000 to, oh, now they're going to be more, because, because you want to capture the video, that's kind of this. So anyway, so I'm asking that you adopt this, so that we do not over the budget in Fund 4020.
All right, council, do you have any questions? Take nine, motion, please.
Motion to approve Resolution 1901.
Second.
Second by Laverne, roll call, please.
Council Shepherd?
Aye.
Council Fisher?
Aye.
Council Hamilton?
Aye.
Council Laverne?
Aye.
Council Piper?
Aye.
Council Robinson?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye, Resolution 1901 is approved. And this is the second final reading, ordinance take 26, adding unlawful to accumulate refuse of later resulting in annual conflicts.
So mayor and council, city clerk Barb Stoller, you got the program to work correctly, so your paragraphs are all in the right order. Section 1 now thoroughly reuses an amendment, adding 16040, and then the, the language that was proposed previously, and then the repealer, the severability effective date, so she made it pretty. I, I didn't have it pretty, I had, I had the right language, and so unless the attorney had anything else, we recommended adoption.
All right, council, any discussion, roll call, please.
Move to approve the second and final rating of ordinance 826.
Second.
Second by Robinson, roll call, please.
Council Fisher?
Aye.
Council Hamilton?
Aye.
Council Laverne? Counselor Lavery?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye. Final reading ordinance 826 is approved. Okay, before it's business from mayor. I'll start on here and go.
I just, I'd like to see what we could do to persuade the DOT to give us some left turn signals for our left turn lanes. I know we probably talked about that before, but man. I mean, it's, it's getting bad. It's been bad, but it's getting worse on night. It's just, you know. I mean, one car sometimes, just one car can make it through that turn.
Oh, gosh.
This is a threat. What's that?
Intermediately?
No, all, all of it, regardless of which one.
Except Nucleus.
All.
Has green.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. But other than that, we need them all.
Yeah, twelve fenders in one way or not the other.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we got the turn lane. He goes, he yell, this doesn't go. That's all I have.
Counselor, I will, I'll invite Mr. Boffo to come talk to our council. I saw that he recently attended a council. Have those conferences, so I'll reach out and invite Mr. Bosen to come.
And at the same time, we'll talk to him about that lane at.
At the trucker.
At the trucker. Don't let that go.
It's not council related. This is my last council meeting. This is Kelly Hamilton. We can call her king next time we meet. I don't know what the sign says.
New sign, very expensive.
Very expensive.
Can I keep you old?
Yes, you can be old.
Susan, I just have a question for you. You kind of inkled, the railroad is possibly having us put crossing arms for Whitefish Medical? Is that why they're stonewalling over there or what?
Yes, sir, that's, that's correct.
When did that appear out of the blue?
Well, CR and I were ganged up on. So at Akron, so CR and I represented the city and they had seven railroad people. And they would say, I'm doing this accurately. I think there should be arms here. And I suppose there are traffic standards because we don't have arms on the highway. Well, if my daughter was crossing here, there should be arms. And then I thought, oh, gosh, we don't want to be putting arms on the highway. So we have, what we know to date is that during this diagnostic meeting, where we had to go about foot by foot in this planning process, and they said, we want curb, we want this, we want that. There's a Montana Department of Transportation has a gentleman, John Eltop, who's the DOT's railroad liaison. Right now, he was not at the meeting, but then everything you submitted to them. So what he recommended is that the NSF put the, put this crossing in as a section 130 funding crossing. Neither CR or I have been able to get an answer on what does that mean? Like, how much funding does it? Because we knew when we rebuilt 12th Avenue West, that we had to put in the concrete panels instead of pavement. Because with pavement, they can't work on anything, right? Like all the, all their mechanics underneath, right? They don't work on it. So so during this review, and and there is an agreement between the NSF and the city from 1995 that says whoever touches this crossing is responsible for whatever, for bringing it up to date. But there, but there's different standards and it kind of, I mean, they're down to the inch. Well, you're already two, you're closer than seven feet, three inches, so you replace this. But then John Eltop would say, well, you know, but if your curb is four feet, three inches away. I think I got that right. You're not touching it. You're okay. But it was really interesting on what they want. Now, our goal, of course, is to get that sidewalk easing. So a year ago, we stood out there and did our diagnosis, a year ago. Probably a year ago and two weeks now. Anyway, they, they said, okay, we'll repeat your plan. CR made some changes and reviewed it. They reviewed it. Railpros reviewed it and we got comments back, but we really didn't know what does this mean? What are we responsible for? Especially when it got put on a list of state projects, so we'll put this on the bottom of those. Neither of us have been able to get an answer. I I did reach out to our congressional delegation and say, can you help with this? So where we are now is we need to find out how much of this is our responsibility and how much of this is necessary, which is what DOT is supposed to coordinate with. But I will say that you are at the railroad's mercy because it's their, it's their crossing. They did note that when the track was put in in 1861, that that we don't, we don't have an easement for the road. Now, it would have been a county road at the time, but I suggested that maybe it was a road before they put in that track.
Well, I, I understand that crossing was put in.
1861. So that's, that's what we got hit with during our, you know, oh, and by the way, there's no easement. Like, hmm, that might have gone the other way. Is 12th? Do you look at USGS maps a long time ago? 12th was there. I just can't find one before 1861 yet, but it really isn't like you guys need this easement. Anyway, CR, Chris, and we, we keep reaching out and saying, what does this mean? So they've had the plans for a year. So you can imagine our surprise when our project coordinator said it could be another six to 10 months before we did easement for the sidewalk. It's like, okay, you've been reviewing it. We just need to know what are we really responsible for? Because with this crossing, it's different than the quiet zone, because with the quiet zone, you have the federal rail administration individual that also stands back and says, they don't have to do that, or they don't have to know, they don't have to do that. So in this instance, if we're touching that crossing.
Susan, the other thing is we're, we're trying to get that wrapped up. We can't wrap that up and release the contractor until we get that. So now I think that's the most important part. I mean, it'd be okay as far as I'm concerned, police walkway. Okay, we're done now. And then leave it in the railroad town, but we can't really do that. Contractor's on the, on the hook for trying to get something done.
We did a stop work order and we'll pay the contractor for everything he's done now and hope that it really isn't six to 10 more months. I mean, they've had it for a year. Amber was out on maternity, leaving she back. You know, and CR is like, so what are you designed to? You know, this person says this, this person says this, are we, are we really? And that's where I said, like, when, when we're looking at tax increment financing funding, which is our only source to pay for this. What is it? Are we looking at 100,000? Are we looking at 500,000? Because then they're, you know, personally, I don't think something from 1995 is that old, but they're like, these are old. Mechanics here and it's closer, so you've got to move it and replace it, so.
Question answered.
I guess. Like I said, it's like the Lendal, isn't it? It's very difficult at times.
Yeah.
But Detroit worked with the railroad.
Other than that, I told Susan this afternoon, I was golfing with one of the U M professors. They had a comment about how we, it was how we contributed to that marketing during their last hearing. And I pointed out to them it wasn't the council. I said it was the people that don't want any growth, who were rather hurt with what he had been presenting. Because he is still the state's premier economist, whether you like the man or not and what he has to say. So I pointed out, I said, that wasn't the council, so be careful what you say.
That's all.
I have nothing to say.
I also have nothing to say. So let's wait for the mayor to say. Yeah. What did I guess? Nothing. Nothing from us. Oh, nothing? That was an acro. Oh, sure. I've spoken enough recently. I have nothing. My daughter mentioned swimming lessons hadn't started yet because there wasn't enough certified instructors with her.
We are trying to get certified instructors. None, none of our certified instructor instructors returned. And we were signing them up to take class, wait to do the class. And then they pulled our last, it was a Friday thing. They say that they're not going to offer the class. So we're jumping through some listed certified water safety instructors.
Well, I see we had, we paid the wave for, for that instructors for, like, guard certification?
Yes, we got four new guards certified and because we lost four guards. And then we have two, two more, two more in class. So we're, we're hoping that we have seven certified guards. And we have, they're, they're young. We have a lot of new guards. So instead of the three guards and the deck monitor, we'll have four guards we're dating in.
So are we going to do swimming lessons this year?
We, yes, we just have to get them trained. And so we're working on two different avenues of getting them.
I think that means we put out that notice, because why we can't, why we're not doing it now, when we're looking to serve it. It's important for a lot of people in town.
Yes, absolutely.
So it was interesting, you heard Mr. DeMoyen about talking about that lighting for the signs. I volunteered to bury those things and backfill and everything else, so I'm pretty interested in it. And at that time, we said they needed to have lighting. And unfortunately, the attorney was in there at the time, kind of coordinating whatever he was doing there. He was uninterested in providing us with any power. So now it's come back up and I certainly hope we can come to some, if there's something that the city can do to get that, I would appreciate it. I think we need to do that. Has the community market found a new site yet, Susan? Are you aware?
I'm not that I'm aware of.
Okay, no more, that's enough. And I'll just make a reminder of tomorrow night is the liaison committee meeting for CFAC for the Superplu site. And and then we have a several other meetings right in the, this, the coming weeks at least. So I just wanted to remind everybody to be aware of that and if they want any more information, those are the places to go. That's all I, oh, one other thing. Last meeting, you brought up how many septic systems are worth a dollar? I asked the guy who was in charge. He said, well, as far as I'm concerned, it is right around 4,000. Ask, yeah, no, 40,000. Oh, no, go ahead. Don't call me your name.
The reason that I gave 63,000 is because you have to allow, we were working with Lake County during that whole study. So I found my report, that's where my 63,000 came.
So so Jim said it's probably right around 40,000, maybe it's touch less, but. So that I just wanted to clarify that, that you knew what you were talking about. All right, so now we'll move to the manager.
All right, so we already talked about Department of Revenue Assessment. We will be doing this fiscal year end. It's a happy new year for us on July 1st. So there'll be another batch of June 30th claims. And then for the next couple of months after that, and probably July and August, you'll see a new batch. Writing anything for that fiscal year and then, and then moving forward. So finance will be kicking out another batch. What they'll do is send the report out to council, probably give you a date, they'll cut checks and move on. And then retroactively, you'll approve it on your next agenda. But it's very critical that we get as much work done before June 30th as possible, on or before June 30th. So you'll see that. The pickleball folks raised up in the. Part, part of Heritage Days, the pickleball folks are going to hold their ribbon cutting on Saturday, July 29th at 10:30 and do some exhibitions. And I'll be at my daughter's wedding. So I'm looking at parks, parks chair, parks committee members. I need a volunteer from the council to be at the 10:30 ribbon cutting.
Tell me what date that is in?
Saturday, July 29th at 10:30.
Yeah, I can probably be there too.
Okay, and I'm going to reach out to the chamber because they've got the big scissors in the room. So they're, it would be really fun, I think, to do the, they're going to have, have some folks there like this. They do some exhibitions and have some information, lessons. I think they're going to try to get some food there too. So anyway, that should be a really exciting event. I'm really starting, I'm going to miss it. I haven't, we have, what we're kicking out, it's on our website, where we have the paddles and the balls to check out. And Silk Kirk had donated eight paddles to us and braces, they're the good ones. I don't know if that'll improve my pickleball game or not. Because we had a couple of other paddles donated to us previously, but. Because we now participate in the pickleball in your community, Silk Kirk sends out emails about proper service and stuff. It's way over my head. I am going to try to venture out there and play pickleball. I use that word loosely, really. I don't know all the rules, but I've read them, but once you're out there. So obviously we'll remind parks committee that, hey, this ribbon cutting will be really exciting. I think he already reached out to Chris. So as part of that pickleball in your community, Silk Kirk asked for, you know, photos. So that'll kind of be what we can say, here, what we're doing. So the claim, so as, so as we go through each piece of your budget, if there's more lengthy, we may do an extra workshop. I would like to still get that council tour scheduled before you adopt your updated capital improvement plan. As you guys know, you do, you look at the five years, but it's, we're looking at 20 years. And then formally in the budget, we say this is what we're doing this year. It would still be good to schedule that tour. So I know that it's harder to get in an extra meeting. We don't have a planning word meeting for the month of July. So maybe that could be our, our that week, that Monday of that week. Get out, see if, I just want to call the Eagle Transit mountain climbers available to do that tour. So that's it. We're, we're busy. We're, oh, I do have one other thing. The county did reach out late this afternoon and say they're, they're, they are withdrawing their request to partner with Columbia Falls on the septic facility. They are, they're, they were working on their due diligence on that property and are stepping away. That's all I've got, mayor and council.
Right, see the attorney, do you have any horse thing?
Mr. Rice, do you have any?
I was kind of thrown here, but I'm happy to say Officer, an officer frozen have completed their field training section, so they're on their own work now during probationary year. And we started Officer Hall and Officer Luna with their field training.
Thank you.
So you have the police activity report, the fire and finance in your, in your pockets. They've, they've been busy despite being tour handed. Sergeant Sean Murphy has announced his retirement June 40th. Parks organizing cake. It's not a party, it's just cake. But I, I, I was sitting there, I mean, like when we swore it in, I was mayor. And so as they start to retire, it's like, holy cow. But he'll be, he'll be missed and we are currently advertising in-house to fill that position.
All right. See, no further business. Be brought before the council. Would anyone like to make a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move.
I stuck it.
What's her name? Excuse me. You're beating her.